Park, you ready?
All right.
Yes.
Start the city council meeting for July the 12th of 2022. And we'll start by reciting the pledge of allegiance. All stand and remove your headgear, please. Your real call and honor. Council members, Kim Helgason.
Here.
Dan Regicco.
Here.
Mary Bailey.
Here.
Here, Molly Ryan.
Here.
Aaron W. Henke, mayor here. City administrator, Mark Paulson. City attorney, Scott Ryan. Riggs.
Yep, here.
City engineer, Derek Golander.
Here.
Okay, we also have city administrator, Holly. City finance, Kathy, and chief of police, Jeff Shulman. And various other guests. We'll go on to citizens comments. Are there any that were risked to be addressed?
I was going to introduce our new CETA rep. Real quick, if I could. I didn't really put a, put it on the agenda, but. Cora. This is Cora Bowman. She's going to be our new one day a week. Economic development person, she's working through CETA. With the EDA. And she's going to be focusing a lot of the business park in the downtown and probably other projects that come up. So the EDA meets the end of this month and so they'll, that's when they'll start. You know, introduce or meet her and start kind of working with her, but I wanted her to, she's been coming, this is her second. Tuesday now that she's been here and I want to just introduce her to the council. So we're pretty excited. We've looked around town quite a bit, I think we're going to start next week. Working in the downtown or having her go around and we're going to meet business owners and just kind of start getting familiar with the downtown a little more, so. Anyway, Cora, if you have any.
Welcome aboard, Cora.
Hi, Cora.
Okay, we'll adopt the agenda, is there anything as is or changes to be made?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. We can do the consent agenda. Google the minutes and appointments and financial in one motion, if wish.
Did you want a motion to adopt the agenda first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move. I'll move, we adopt the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, motion been made in second to adopt the agenda as is, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Sorry about the mistake. Consent agenda. Prove all the minutes and appointments and financial, we can do all three at one time. Is there any question that anybody has on it?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the minutes.
Okay, I will second that one. Any questions on it? Otherwise, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes pass, okay. Moving along. Okay, presentation and public hearings. We will open it to public hearings on item A, which is nuisance and hazardous property. Located at one Langford Avenue. And we will have attorney Riggs take over at this particular point.
Yep, I will jump in and you can gather open the public hearing and with that basically what. This is an opportunity for anyone to make comments on one Langford Avenue and the. Well, yeah, the materials in the packet that show that nuisance and hazardous conditions that exist at the property discusses at last meeting. This is the opportunity that's provided under the city code for comments, but also to provide information and evidence that this constitutes a nuisance and a hazardous property. I will submit on the record for the public hearing, all the materials you have in the packets, all those written materials will form the basis of the public record. So we don't need to go into those in any detail that are obviously notices that provided the property. The purported property owner, individual responsible for the property. Notifying that individual of one, the hearing of two, all the nuisances, there's three different letters that are in packet. There are also a number of photos that show the conditions existing at the property. With unlicensed vehicles, building or materials of some sort that are being stored. Along with a boat, things like that. Beyond that, we also have in the packet, the city code describing the process, which we discussed briefly last council meeting as well. So I have no other further comments beyond that, other than to say. It's fairly clear from the recommendation of city staff as well as the city attorney that a nuisance and hazardous condition exists at the property. American opener up for any other comments from council, staff or public, if that would be the case. And if not, then you can move on and close the meeting, we'll deal with it later in the agenda.
Anybody open for comments on it? Public wise or council? We're going to that later on into the.
We will, so you can, you can have them.
We can close.
Close the public.
Then we'll have, we need a motion then to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, a motion has been made in second to close. Item A, public hearing nuisance and hazardous property located at one Langford Avenue, those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass, okay. We can go on then to item B, which is public hearing. Vacation of street line between block forty-nine and block fifty called the Hewitts, Hewitts addition. And again, do you want to take over with that?
Yeah, and again, for the purposes of the, the record in the public hearing, you have written materials in the packet, including a notice relative to this. We came up with a legal description, which the mayor noted being a part of Hewitt's addition to Kenyon and also. Looks like historically I'll rely on Derek for this, that it was called West Avenue at some point in the past. And the request has been made by adjacent property owners to have that portion that's identified in your packet and you've got a couple of pictures of that. That it be vacated, in order to do that, you have to make a finding, there's no public purpose for retaining that. If there are any easements located within that area, which you believe there are.
Excuse me, utilities.
There's utilities. Utilities in that area, we will retain an easement for the purposes of those utilities. If you do move forward and vacate the right of way, that is required by statute that, that occur. So right now, again, just as you had another, the previous public hearing, under Minnesota statute, this is the opportunity for anybody to state. Why it should not be vacated or why it should be vacated. Right now, from staff's perspective and city attorney's perspective, it is certainly okay to vacate this street. There's no need for public purpose or no public purpose for retaining it as a right of way, but we will have to retain easements over. Portions of it for utilities that exist, so keeping that in mind. Beyond that, I have no one in the comments, I don't know if Derek, he had anything further on that?
They were, are they going to draw up a separate easement?
We will have to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Again, it's open to the public, if anybody wants to comment. We will deal with it later in the meeting to deal with the actual.
Okay, we'll open this up to public, if you wish anybody to express their opinions on it. We'll ask again, is there anybody that wishes to make any comments? If not, counsel, where do we?
I'll move, we close the public hearing.
I will second it.
Okay, most have been made, second to close. The public hearing, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass again, okay. We'll move on then with engineering. Project updates, item number one is North Street Drainage Improvement and city engineer, Derek Golander, you wish to take over?
Sure, so just a couple of quick updates this month for the North Street Drainage Improvements, do expect that work to start here in a couple of weeks. Late July, I heard from the contractor, they're starting to get materials in here, so hopefully by the next meeting. That work will be underway, if not, close to completion. They'll start out with removing the trees through there and then probably about a week later, they'll come in and actually put in the pipe. Any questions related to that project? Next one on the list here, the chip seal project, contractor has delivered their rock. That they need for the chip sealing out to the public works building. We're currently expecting them to start on July nineteenth, which is a week from now. So there will be some notices going out, well, post on the city Facebook page and they'll be posting those areas for no parking. But July nineteenth is the date that we're expecting them to be here.
And on the map, Derek. So it looks like a lot of. The Tronium area is going to get chip sealed and then the bottom part, you have some priority one, priority two, priority three. Will, will all three of them be done or what would determine whether we get to some and not others?
So what we had laid out when we received that. Quote from them, their price was less than what we were expecting and less than what was budgeted for, so we added in these prioritized streets, so they would be completed in that order. I, I sent a guy out here just today to start measuring out these areas to see where we're going to finish up. So by tomorrow, I'll know if we can do one or two or three. It'll let, I would expect that it's going to be all three, but I just need to verify.
Sure, yep.
Whatever's not completed would simply be pushed into the next.
Yep, thank you.
Pearl Creek and Forest Street sanitary improvements, so we were waiting for another month for the sewer televising crew to get out. They have been out the past couple of days and as I understand, they're going to finish up tomorrow. Took them a couple of days, they had to get their equipment back in the, in the woods there, but it sounds like that portion is done. So. Once we get those televising videos and reports, we'll just review those briefly and then we can. Put together our preliminary design report and currently planning to review that with you all next month. Along those same lines, once we review that. That will be a good opportunity to just review the entire capital improvement plan, infrastructure management plan, just in general. It's been, let's see, we put that together in twenty twenty. It's been a couple of years since we last looked at that in detail. So that'll also be a good opportunity to see what are those new costs after we adjust them for what's been happening for inflation? What does that look like with the city's financing and. Lastly, where can we potentially fit that training road extension? Into the plan and what makes sense? So those are the types of things we'll be looking at here and we'll bring, we'll bring quite a bit of material next month to discuss on that.
When you look at the Tronium Road extension, will you look at, like, if we have like an emergency, like minimum. Road to get started versus one that's fully developed, like, you know, I, I, I think we gotta, we gotta be creative in how we get an extension up there, we might not be able to start with. A fully designed road. It, it might have to come in stages.
Sure, and you know, gravel road, I believe was one of the options that we have priced out before.
Yep.
So yeah, that would be, would be part of it, I can, I can bring a couple of optional costs for that. I see what you're saying there, definitely not the full built out with utilities condition.
Right, yeah, I mean, otherwise I think it becomes cost prohibitive, so it's something else.
Yeah, right now, yeah. Yeah, that's one of the main things that I'm looking at is the extension of getting that going, because you know, we've got the industrial park now. We're also looking at when you go looking around, it's like every other place, so homes are being bought up in a hurry, new ones are being built. But we're at this point where we need to expand to help people to move here that may work in this industrial park. So that I think has a priority that we need to open up more areas for development. So I think we should really seriously look at it, and I know that EDA meeting coming up, I know that's going to be a well discussed. Subject to, okay, so, okay, thank you. Anything else on engineering? Also, do you have any more questions for city engineer?
I don't think so.
Okay, well then we'll move on to legal and attorney Riggs.
All right, I'll jump back in, back to the nuisance violation that was brought on one Langford Avenue, you had a public hearing prior and. Materials in the packet describe what is the current condition. City attorney and staff believe it is a nuisance situation, does constitute a nuisance and a hazardous condition under our city code section twenty dash ten point oh five. The next step after conducting a public hearing is to make the determination. At the council level, if you agree that there's a nuisance violation and a hazardous condition existing here. And then he would direct the staff and city attorney to put together findings of fact as well as in order to abate the nuisance. Oftentimes, we've done that where we bring it back at the next meeting and do that. We have a pretty standard form you can do based on the materials in the packet, so if you want to make that determination tonight, I think you can. We don't have a written document in the, in the packet, but we do have the standard order to abate that we utilize and findings of fact, which. Again, are all the materials you have in the packet, right now we've already discussed. So it's, it, at least by your next meeting, you're supposed to make that decision, can you make it tonight, sure, you can direct us to do that tonight and if that's what you want to do, go ahead and do it. But I can answer any questions, Mark can answer any questions, we move from there.
This form that you have, is that a state form or?
No, it's nothing we've used before, yes, we've used it here in the city before, for other nuisance properties.
How has this ever been challenged?
That when we've, well, people don't like it when they receive it, but.
No, no, I mean, you know, going to court, how, how serious.
This is not where we're taking them to court right now, what we're doing is this is purely enforcing at the city council level and the city level under our city code. So there is another approach, we discussed this last week, we can file criminal violations or citations as well as to the property, that's another alternative you can do. We're doing a civil enforcement versus the property which gives. Counsel and through city staff, the right to clean up the property. If the person does not respond within a given timeframe, you set what that timeframe is.
Okay.
What, what's, what's reasonable, I don't know, we've been talking to this gentleman since last year about cleaning up the property, so what's reasonable, fifteen days, thirty days, ten days, that's for you folks to decide.
Well, I do know there was activity there Sunday.
Yep.
He moved the boat about ten feet. As I go by on a regular basis.
Well, oftentimes getting a notice that this does cause a property or to bring it somewhat in compliance, if not into compliance. That was certainly the hope when I talked with Mark before and internally in my, with one of my colleagues as well, who put some of these materials together. And if not, then you adopt this, we also have the ability for the police chief to go out and cite the property, this is a misdemeanor violation. That's another way to approach this and it's certainly something we have utilized in the community in the past. So you have two ways to approach this, what we're doing tonight as well as directing the chief to go view the property and if he makes that determination, he can issue a misdemeanor citation as well.
Council.
I actually drove after the last city council meeting, drove, I never drive that way and I mean. It is substantial, I mean, I was like. I, I always just go sixty, so I never, you know, you can see some of it, but if you really don't pay attention, you can't see it. And the fact that we've talked, you've had conversations with them, it's not like we have not given him an opportunity.
No, Mark has said multiple letters to the individual.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's right when you're coming into our, into the time, it just looks, it's not good.
Like we need to, yeah, I, I feel like we need to take the next step and I feel like we need to give a deadline now. You know, thirty days in my mind seems pretty reasonable.
Right.
But I think we need to take the next step.
Because then, I mean, if he, then he might actually take it serious and it's probably going to take him thirty days. I mean, I mean, yeah, so it's like if he gets this and maybe that'll put a warmer under him, you know?
That's my thought.
I just wondered, the house south of there. You know, I drove by there again tonight and if, if he doesn't have stuff that encroaches on that property, it has got to be within inches of encroaching on that property. And I mean, there's, there's the trucks that are just right outside that house, outside the window. And usually these, these type of situations don't, they don't fix themselves and they don't get better unless we, unless we, you know, put some teeth behind it.
Thirty days does get you to your next council meeting as well, so you'll know if this individual has made an effort, thirty days, I think gets you past it by what, two days here? I'm looking at the calendar, right, August ninth will be the next meeting.
Yeah, it'll be actually a week later than that or so, because of my election.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, that's right.
Which is maybe even better.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of on board with the thirty days, I think that's reasonable for this person and.
It's going to take some time if he truly does take it seriously.
It usually does and, you know. You know, unfortunately, if he's not taking any action yet, I don't know if he will, but. Sending out a finding and, and a notice to abate, it starts that clock and gives the city the ability to come back and do something if you feel necessary. Now again, that means you incur costs, you've got to deal with this person, decide how to get those costs back, but it is an option to council consider at your next meeting.
So does the chief bring the complaint to him personally?
If, if we did the criminal action, that's, that, we, that would be filed under, you know, in some form there, whether it's the chief directly or being served some way. This way, we will serve it through the city, city staff and myself. Just as we gave certified mail before, we will do the same thing, this case probably will send out a process server to provide it, is this civil action? And make sure that he gets it, that he knows this is serious.
So when you say that, then it's the city's responsibility or the city takes on cleaning it up, like?
It could, you could, if he does not, this is a step in the process, if he takes no action. You have the ability now, under our ordinance, after the time period you set, to go in and abate this nuisance. We have done that on other properties over the years very infrequently. Typically, we don't want to do it because you expend public dollars and you've got to try to get it back, can you assess it back to the tax rolls? Yes, you can, we have those provisions in our code to do that. But yeah, again, it's a process and it takes some time, but the reality is, yes, you can recoup the cost for cleaning this up, now if there's. Anything of value, if those vehicles are of value, if the boat he moved ten feet is of value. You can sell those even, but then you start getting into some very interesting areas that. We try to avoid and chief can talk about that when we get cars that are in powder and all that and it's a lot of work. But honestly, our code allows you to do that and then you can use that to recoup the cost for cleanup and any excess cost goes back to the owner. I'm hoping we don't get to that point because it's not the easiest way to go.
Chief, I believe you have something to say?
Yeah, so regarding the vehicle.
It, it would be, if, again, that's something we've got to figure out what is and what is not, you can't park a truck just in some area, I mean, that, that's not compliance with our ordinance, so. We'll talk about them, figure that out, but if, but the pictures show. That's illegally parked that vehicle right there. So that's what he's got to obey. Yep. Yeah. And it's great if he's got tabs and licenses on all these vehicles, but then he's got to move them, put them somewhere that can be properly parked.
Supposed to be operating too.
Well, that's the point, yeah.
And then you got a mole.
Yep.
You know, or something.
Okay, council, we need to move on this. Looks like we're looking at thirty days for a reasonable time. And follow the recommendations of our city attorney as to what he feels is best for us to do.
Do you need a motion on this?
I would tell you to do a motion that says you are adopting the findings of fact from the public hearing and the materials in the packet. I'm saying this slowly so Holly can get it, but, and you will, that, your decision is this constitutes a nuisance and a hazardous condition under our city code. And that you direct staff and city attorney to work together to issue the order to abate nuisance. And I would say, make that motion, second that, and I will give that language to Holly, it will be fine.
I was going to say, I did kind of got lost in that one. I would be okay.
I, I will move the recommendation of the city attorney.
Yes, there you go.
I second it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay. Now it's up to me. Okay, a motion, is there any more discussion on this, let's put it this way first. There isn't, okay, there's been a motion made and second. Under, I'm going to put it under the recommendation of the city attorney. To proceed with the nuisance property violation on one Langford Avenue, does that sound good?
That's fine.
Okay, all of those in favor of it, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes pass. Okay. I will. You got yourself a job for a while.
Yeah. Yeah, nuisances are never fun. They, they are very difficult and not easy to deal with. Our next item was the request to vacate what we'll call West Avenue in Hewitt's addition, you had a public hearing already on that. There were no additional comments beyond the materials provided in the packet, the request has been made under state statute, Minnesota statutes for twelve point eight five one. And it is recommended from city attorney, city engineer, I believe, and city staff. That the council moved forward with adoption of resolution number. Two zero two two sixteen vacating. The described portion of West Avenue, if you have any questions or need any further explanation, I can certainly provide that. But this again is our standard vacation resolution that we utilize and have utilized numerous times in the past. That'll stand for any questions.
Okay. And the easements have been taken care of or going to be.
Going.
They will, they will have to be, yes.
Okay, and. Doug Klett, you're aware of that too, is that correct? The easements that are coming in, that will be. The easement that are coming in, that will be, you're in agreement with that? Okay.
And that that is a finding number one in there that says subject retaining drainage utilities, but it's over blah, 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 the street or any of those types of utilities, so that that is covered in the resolution.
Okay, then is there any discussion?
Who's gonna do what, you know?
Yeah, that would be a good thing. He the property owners are responsible for uh survey work associated with the easements. Whatever you feel you need. It doesn't, I we can do it if you'd like, otherwise.
Well, so Doug, this is a um question for you, I guess. We have to put together a description for an easement over the utilities. Now, we normally bill that back to the property owner. So it doesn't matter who, I guess, who does it, you know, we can have. Um, was there a normal surveyor? Yeah, Dave Rapp, we could talk to him and see what it would cost for him to put something. I don't think it would be a big deal. Um, but just so you're kind of aware of that.
Yeah, actually, we cannot do the vacation unless that happens.
That'll be up to the cost of the property owner, is that correct?
Yeah, usually if it's requested by a property owner, then it, yeah, that goes back to, or if it's two property owners, but in this case, like, you know, it's it's ultimately gonna just be one property owner, so. Okay.
So we can't make a motion until that.
Oh, it it actually is already covered in the resolution. I will add something that says at the cost of the property owner, but if the reality is, yes, that's covered.
Okay.
Um, what you're doing with the resolutions, two zero two two dash sixteen, you're finding that there is no public reason to retain that. I'll call it West Avenue, um, and that you can vacate it, but it is subject retaining all the appropriate utilities.
Sure, okay.
The standard forms, yeah. Okay, um, is there any more questions on the council? I'm gonna make that motion then to go ahead with resolution twenty twenty two dash sixteen.
I will second it.
Okay. Any questions? If not, all of those in favor of resolution twenty twenty two dash sixteen, say aye. Ayes pass. Okay, got that one done.
And then the last item on the legal uh list for the agenda.
Doug had a question.
What we have to do, I I will jump in and explain that. We'll have to do the easement. The easement would be filed at the same time. We also had in the packet a notice of vacation proceedings. That's what is provided to the county. Sometimes they also want the resolution record. Typically, they just want the notice of vacation. Um, with the easement in that, that would be then the county would say it's been vacated. It goes back to the adjacent. Right away was was created, um, so it's not up to us, not up to the council to decide that. It's really what title shows. We typically do not request title work to determine that, and that's left up to the county on how they apportion it.
So on the survey to put together, I'm I'm just wondering, put this all together. If there's one property owner, they pay for it. What if there's two or three? How do they divide it up?
Well, again, it depends on the request. I think Mark was getting it. We've got a request from one property owner um to do that. That's up to the council, how you wanna portion that. Or ask that if we want portion.
Go ahead. Okay, I just.
Let let me think that through because I I'll talk with Mark afterwards and we'll we'll connect because it might be easier if there's, you guys sign a put claim deed right away between the parties when this gets into play. Then it won't create a title issue for all of you, so I I'll talk with Mark and Derek after. Yeah. And and that's what they will typically do, and then they'll need a deed to go from from. Yeah.
That's that's.
And and again, that's oftentimes the city doesn't get there, you know, involved with that, but to help out, you would in some certain cases.
Well, I just, that's why I said I didn't want to open a can of worms, but at the same time, I was somewhat aware of what could have happened. So that's why I brought it up. Okay, I feel better about it. Any more question or a discussion on item? One B one. Thank you. Old business, I think we can just kinda slide that off unless you got something, Mark.
Nope.
Okay. Okay. New business. There's a new guy in town. Name is Barney Nesset. Would like to discuss downtown parking. Barney, if you'd like to speak up good and loud so I can hear you.
It was just, when I, when you look at the spaces, so you think of like a ninety degree space. Essentially, you know, you would put three cars or one. The problem with ninety degrees, you need wider streets to do that. If you look at the chart with the with the angles, as you go down in the angles, so if you go like seventy five degree angle parking, you know, then you reduce the width of the street this way. I know your streets. And your sidewalks are actually twelve, fourteen feet. So the idea was, you know, could we, should we look at maybe working with the state? And, you know, give them some options and say, you know, maybe we could put angle parking on one side of the street and then just repaint the lines, you know, just from a a cost standpoint, what's the easiest to do and quickest to do. So as you look, if you look at the numbers, you know, ninety degree, you fit thirty three cars. As you go down, you know, you get more angle, then you fit less cars. But then you don't need the street as wide either, so it's kind of, it's 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 kind of finding that sweet spot where what you got.
Yeah, yeah, that would be interesting. I mean, if to figure out with the, like, if, you know, because I was kind of looking at the six, it'd just be interesting how many cars we could actually fit, you know, between.
Yeah, well, you're blocking, just you're blocking from like uh uni down to the next block.
Yeah. You know, with each angle, like, yeah.
Do you know what Wanamango's is? I'm just curious. Like, outside of JB, is an air fifty seven? Okay, so they're at that seventy.
So they're a little, they're a little wider, you know, I think they possibly were grandfathered in as far as the access.
That that is one thing, when you're looking at other communities and some of these streets that were built fifty years ago, there may be parking nets in place that would no longer be allowed if it were a brand new street.
Okay.
Well, that was my question, because it's a, I mean, it's a highway.
That's actually, you know, you can actually back out and traffic could still come by.
Yeah.
And I think those are like sixty.
I mean, it's an issue. I want it. I would like something changed. Up front of my store, I mean, I can't have, those people are coming out of coffee, there's no meat. Every morning.
We're planning on, you know, a lot of us.
Yeah.
So we're leaving the park.
Yeah.
But it would just, you know, I think, you know, hard to say how rigid the state would be, you know, I don't know, you know. But I would think if you go down and you say, here's a bunch of options, you know, I think it would look cool. I mean, if you grab that picture. Just got. Like Red Wing does it, but they they cut in the sidewalks not very wide, but they cut in the parking and it looks real, you know, it looks more homie kind of, more uh.
Oh.
Not so antiseptic, I guess, it's kind of, probably. And if it's something like that, to do that would be fairly cheap.
We have enough sidewalk potentially that you.
We do, we have quite large sidewalks.
Would, so I I spent a little bit of time looking at this beforehand, if you would mind, to share. Um, so when it comes to trunk highway standards and what's allowed the parking dimensions, traveling dimensions, those standards uh aren't as well defined. Um, you know, it's ultimately going to be up to MinDOT and District Six of MinDOT more specifically, so obviously we'd have to go to them for any approvals. County state highways uh have standards that are better defined, so when I just took their standards uh and applied it, it looked like there was room, potentially room to add a diagonal parking inside the street. If I just threw those on the north side of the road, just, you know, just to look at an example, and that added nine spaces in one block. So I don't, are you talking about one block or two blocks?
I I just took three hundred.
Okay, all right, yeah, it's just that that block.
So nine more cars per block.
Yeah, between Forest and Spring Street, it it gets, it it gets complicated when you start adding driveways in for other parking lots and that type of thing. But in that specific case, you could add nine more spaces. Uh, the thing that you you have to take into account is anytime there's diagonal parking uh along a busier road such as Highway sixty, they don't want those vehicles backing out into traffic. There basically has to be a complete separate lane.
Sure.
Vehicles to park in and out. If you've ever driven through Pine Island, you'll see there.
Yeah.
Their streets are very wide.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's one of the reasons why.
Okay.
Because they have diagonal parking on the one side. Um, there's, there would definitely be more that goes into it because there's some traffic layout stuff that I can see that they've done with the existing striping that's out there. Um, that would have to be taken into consideration. I don't know that without talking more on them or with them about that, um, but it's something, you know, if you'd like us to look into some options with that. We could do that. Uh, one thing I will remind you of is uh, I believe right now they have scheduled for twenty thirty. When they're going to repay Highway sixty, who knows what happens.
Yeah, it's a long time.
Um, but you know, those projects holding all else equal, those projects are probably more cost effective for doing substantial completions where you're pulling out concrete or modifying pavement, that type of thing. Um, but if you're just looking at a restriping project, well, that's potentially a lot easier. A lot of this is gonna come down to what the district traffic engineer says.
Did you say you looked at the north or south?
I just plugged it in for the north side of the road. It looked like they're doing some stuff with the layout.
I think there'd be more room, um, less driveways and stuff worse on the south side.
Yeah, and it looked like they had some layout stuff where there's, if you're coming down the road this way, if you're driving east uh and you're making a turn onto Red Wing Avenue, you know.
Yeah, and it's weird, then you got, yeah, you got Red Wing and then you go up and then you got, it's like that's a weird intersection to that.
It looks like they've shifted traffic there and it's probably, I haven't verified this, but it's probably to uh keep truck turning movements from, you know, moving into the other lane there as, you know, vehicles are come up to all sides of the intersection. So that was just, when I looked at it, oh, that's probably gonna be an issue there, so I just did it as an example on the north side. We can look at whatever options.
Sure.
So you just want more spots?
We all want.
There's always been a discussion about off-street parking in one particular location that we've looked at over time. Might be a little less costly than redoing Main Street itself. I'm just saying that there's a chance of it looking into it. I.
That property.
Some other property, but that's exactly what I was just thinking too is, I think the 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 odds of getting something like this happen are gonna be, I think you have to figure it's a long shot. But, and the other thing is the cost, you know, because the city would have to pay the pretty much the whole cost, so I think it'd be pretty. I think it would not help our trying to save our pennies for this trending road extension, this kind of thing, I think would be. But I think another way to look at this is off-street parking and the council, the EDA and the council have talked about this in the past. It'd be nice to have another lot somewhere downtown where we have twenty or thirty more spots. It would make, I think, could make a big difference. So. Well, I think we'd have to cut back some of the sidewalks possibly to do, you know, to widen. And I don't, I'm just saying, I don't know how amenable MinDOT's gonna be to that, because I've been on the other side of this where they've been trying to get rid of it in places and I can't frankly see him walk, you know, letting us do it, but like if you see a a situation like this, you know, where you've got the, I mean, that, I don't know what that would cost. I think you'd have to put it on those sidewalks, probably.
Modifying those sidewalk widths is difficult, especially now with the ADA standards and sidewalk widths. They like to keep those as wide as possible. In some cases, fourteen feet is, they might be looking for even more width.
Yeah.
It's just with 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 some of the ADA standards that have come that have come about in the past, ten years, fifteen years, it's getting more and more difficult to reduce sidewalk width. Say that again? It's it's that, and when you get into downtown areas where it's the full width of the right of way, you know, anywhere outside of the road is covered in sidewalk, they want even more.
That's my question. What, so if we at least looked into this, what would, what would be the next steps to at least look into the restriping, the minimum that could be done?
I honestly, I would just call up their traffic engineer and see what he thinks before we even put together any layouts or.
Yeah.
Anything like that, just a conversation.
Yeah, get a start. Yeah, get a start to it and, and then, I mean, no matter what, I mean, just like, no, regardless of whether we can do that on the street or we gotta do something, because it's kind of a nightmare. I mean, it really is. It's awful. I mean, to, a- and anytime there's an event, like, even when we have like the motorcycles come through town and they want to go to Lacy's and they're eventually going to want to go to your restaurant, and then they walk downtown and come to my, you know, there's no place for these people, you know, and so no one wants to stop. And tha- and then that's less money for the, you know, I mean, you gotta look, well, it's going to cost money, but then you're not bringing money into the community either because people are driving through because there's nowhere to park, you know? We.
One of the idea, put on there, like, you know, if you were to cut out on one side, just for like a motorcycle, eight feet, you're going to cut out maybe six feet.
Yeah.
You can create quite a new spot.
Uh, and we have talked, you know, like, on the EDA, we have talked about that, you know, there is a building that we would like to go away. And then we would like to just have like a little city parking lot there, and that would kind of solve all the problems. And like you said, maybe that's more cost effective to, I mean, I don't know what the attorney thinks, but maybe that's more cost effective to move forward with that little nightmare than this.
You have a much better chance of creating your own parking lot on city-owned land, however you acquire it, than you would working with MinDOT on a state highway.
Okay.
I don't think there's any question.
Okay.
Well, we maybe solve two problems, um, one bird.
Would it make sense to, um, try to set up, like, if we were to hand this off to the EDA and have the, um, MinDOT rep visit with the, the EDA and look at, at, you know, potential issues there? I guess the other thing I'd like to do is get, um, some input from the other businesses, you know, on, on Main Street as well, and, and make sure that, um, what we're doing is going to work for, for the bulk of them. And I think that would probably be more conducive to, um, the EDA having a conversation, bringing up some ideas and then.
Bringing that to the businesses.
Bringing it to the commercial club, yeah, yeah. And look at, eh, you know, I, I, I don't know if this will be completed overnight. I think it is. This is, you know, having worked with, with MinDOT before on different issues, they're usually, um, you know, you can get them there. It just, but you, you, and the best thing is to be, you know, united on, uh, on a, on a solution. So, I don't know, I think this might be one where it'd be a good thing for the EDA to, to have that meeting with Bin Dot, um, and see what, discuss options and then go from there. But, yeah, I agree. It's, it's actually kind of a, it, it's, it's a, it's a good problem. Uh, you know, the, the worst thing is having, you know, desolation and, eh, well, we got, we got too much space, there's no cars, this, this is good. But we obviously want to make sure that we help the businesses that, that they can get as much traffic in there as possible, you know?
Well, personally, I would like to see a change, you know, and I do think it would modernize, but that's a gigantic, gigantic undertaking too.
Sit down in a room and you'd say, okay, how about if we do thirty degree or forty-five, sixty, you know? And, and just give them all the options that people want. How about we take two feet of sidewalk or four feet sidewalk, you know? And just kind of lay it out for them. And they'll work with me to come up with.
They will. Yep, they will.
They, you know, that's kind of their job. And if they stand their heart remains, maybe.
But I think the biggest thing here is just understanding what process they want to go through. Once we get into the dimensions, then it's just a matter of going into their design standards and making something that meets the standard. Uh, because that's, that's what they're going to be interested in. But if we can understand with that process, that's, we might have a little bit better idea.
Well, the next EDA meeting is Tuesday, July the twenty-sixth. Is there a possibility of having, uh, calling EDA and Derek, do you think you could possibly make that at eight o'clock? I think you should be there.
You're usually there, aren't you, anyway, Derek? Yeah.
Twenty-sixth, yes, there you go. Yep.
We could try, but I, I can't. I mean, we've been trying to get a meeting set up with them just to talk about the four-way or the corner, you know, by the old BP and the main corner and some utility issues and fire hydrants and that's been like ping pong back, back. So, if I get somebody here by the twentieth, I'd be shocked, who knows? But I will call them again Thursday and tell them or tomorrow morning and tell them, you know, now what we want to talk about also, maybe I'll get somebody.
Or even a Zoom discussion with them, then they, you know.
Yeah, I mean, anything.
Call back would be good.
Right.
They're not well-defined for trunk highways. That's, that's why we need to talk.
They're fluid.
Yeah.
The, the other thing too about, you know, the, with the, the reconstruction being done in twenty thirty, if we can come up with a plan, let's say that we decide that, you know, we'd like to do some angle parking, we could, we could do, stripe it in, which would be relatively cheap, see how it works. And, you know, that gives the council, um, and the city some time to really come up with a really good permanent plan, uh, that, you know, it'll be a few years down the road, but, um, it could give us a opportunity to try some things first, see how they work. Is the angle parking better on the north side than the south side or, um, you know, those are things that can be explored?
Need to have to shift that center line to one side or the other.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the actual work, very simple. That's the planning process. That's, that's going to be the struggle.
You know, in the long run, just to make very aesthetic, biting Main Street. You know, maybe we, you think about something like this where, you know, because if you go to some places, it's, it's just cool. It's real inviting and it's, you know, it's just, I mean, I mean, doesn't have that, doesn't jump out. I mean, if you did something, you need to get away. I just, I, I like the concrete cutting idea because it's not that expensive.
Yeah, it, it's going to get complicated once you start dealing with drainage. There, there, no way you're going to be able to just cut out concrete and get something like.
I think if Wayne was here, he would be like.
Some, some of that layout stuff is definitely good discussion to have when they start developing that, that project. Right now, it's just planned for repaving, basically an overlay. But if you're changing it into a reconstruction, you know, that, that, that's the opportunity the preliminary design base to look at different options. And you go out to the entire community and ask what, you know, what do you want? Say that again? Yeah, yeah, I was counting eighteen on the front side and then, or on, on the north end and twenty-seven, go up to twenty-seven if you had angle parking. Just in one scenario that I've looked at, you know, spent very little time looking at it, but. Forty-five.
And you're just looking at one block, is that correct from? It's kind of. I don't know about one block.
I thought you said you were looking at Nessens too, no?
That was my question. I just looked at one. We, we didn't get into specifics on.
I thought, uh, someone said Spring Street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Last year's, past mine, yeah, so would you like my full block and then that the other one?
From the Speedway north up to, or like a story or even down there.
It's getting into that. That's where you start changing layouts and that boulevard starts to come into play.
Yeah.
In the middle of the road there.
Our roses.
Where it's, yeah, that's, that's where it starts to get tricky. So, um, it, it would make more sense to talk very high level with MinDOT person, try to understand process before you get into any level of detail.
So will you, can you do that?
Yeah, and it sounds like Mark's already reached out to him, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd, I'd recommend this go on the EDA agenda and that's where it can be.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
We're going to do that.
Yeah.
Something, even if it's not this, yeah, even if it's not the street, we got it, we need something.
Yep.
Something more, absolutely.
So that's just discussion. There's no motion to be made or anything on that sort. But I think, uh, bringing it up, Barney, that's the best we can do, but at least it's a start.
So, Barney, that meeting will be the twenty-sixth at eight AM. You, you should come. I know, it's my favorite time to, love it. We'll see, yep. Maybe they will, yeah. We'll call in, whatever, yep. So, okay.
Going, uh, not to schedule in the restaurant, so.
Any ballpark?
Paul, we shoot for Rose Fest, but I ain't going to make that.
Okay.
Plumbing setbacks, so. If you went first September, okay. Cool, optimistically maybe.
Looking forward to it.
Good, it's good. Only do what you can do.
Yeah.
Anyway, move on then. A new business, we'll go to item B, which is resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Pointing election judges for twenty twenty-two. Any discussion on that?
Standard.
Yep.
Yeah, we have to do this prior to every elect.
Yeah.
I make a motion to set resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, appointing election judges.
I will second it.
Okay, motion been made, second for resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen. Appointing election judges for twenty twenty-two. All of those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 it's passed, okay. Next one, it approved Rose Fest events. And we can use, do together, if it's okay with everybody, item one, two, three, four, five, six and seven, all in one motion, if that's favorable with everybody.
Yes.
I will move approval of items one through seven under the Rose Fest events.
I'd like to second that one myself. So, any more discussion on it? Not? Most have been made and second approved Rose Fest events, one, two, three, four, five, six and seven. All of those in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 it's passed, okay. Okay, then item D is to reschedule the August council meeting due to primary election. And there has been a couple of, um, uh, dates that have been set, which I believe are August fifteenth or sixteenth and seventeenth. I don't have it right here, I'll bring it.
So, um, we looked at, Holly and I looked at the schedule.
Yeah, fifteen, six.
Holly's going to be out, you know, dealing with, um, the fair, the Go To County Fair, pretty much that whole week. So, the week of, you know, the election. We're talking here August sixth, the week of August sixth is what I'm trying to say. So we were looking at possibly trying to do it the next week. Better scheduling standpoint, but it also depends on when you, when the council can.
That's a Monday and a Tuesday.
When I, I won't be back until, what did they say, the sixteenth? I won't be back until really the eighteenth.
Okay.
For myself, I do have, um, meeting on the sixteenth, which is Tuesday, uh, evening at seven thirty, but I will go along with whatever the rest of the council uh, wishes to go with, and if you gentlemen can, uh, make it and Holly too.
I, I have another meeting on the sixteenth at night that I can't, so I'd have to send somebody else, but.
So sixteenth is pretty well out, or for you?
Seventeenth, seventeenth is fine.
Sixteen, what about you sixteen?
Yeah, oh, that, that whole week.
Kill the fly, to fly issue, he's dead. High priority issues over here.
Come here, turn it red there, man.
We were trying to be subtle about it, but it didn't work. But the fly is dead.
That's a Wednesday.
Was that a Wednesday, Tuesday?
Sorry, Tuesday's the sixteen, seventeenth is Wednesday.
Would it, would it work? Can make the sixteenth.
Would it work better? Uh, I don't, and I don't know everyone's schedule, but, I mean, could we change, if we change the time, are we stuck at seven o'clock or could we?
No, you can change the time, is that?
Wow, it can't be two places at once. It, it, yeah, it's at six thirty on the sixteen.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, if we change.
I mean, I could potentially do Zoom, um, sure. You don't want to do Zoom and be driving the camper. Right? That's illegal.
And then.
Honestly, don't plant around me. If I'm the one that can't make it on the seventeenth, you could do it on Sunday.
By the eighteenth, we're getting into Rose Fest stuff, so that's out.
Yeah, it's getting kind of late. Um, the other problem is we don't want to get too late in the month because we got to approve bills and stuff like that. You know, it's kind of, you know, if we, that's why I was looking at early that next week because.
Can we do it later on that, that week? The fifteenth was out, did you say?
Fifteenth works for me, so.
Monday?
Yeah.
What, what's your schedule like?
I'm open.
What day was?
Don't worry about me.
Monday, the fifteenth.
But, yeah, it does for me too.
Yeah, Monday the fifteenth is.
How about an earlier meeting?
Earlier meeting on the fifteenth?
Earlier meeting.
Sure.
Okay, how about fifteenth for you?
I'm, I'm fine. I have my short days Monday and I hate Mondays anyway. I can just be here.
How about you, Mary?
I can do fifteenth. I, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, the way, Holly?
I think so.
Fifteenth? You're in? You don't say much. Okay, Mark?
Yeah, fifteenth is fine with me.
Does it? Okay, that sounds like.
You want to do it a little bit earlier, is that what I'm, like, six o'clock or?
I don't, what time can you get here?
I can be here whenever.
Okay.
I don't care.
Mayor?
Earlier the better.
Yeah.
You're just lucky to make it at seven. How are you going to get here?
That's because it's dinner. Like, I got to get dinner for a hundred kids ready all the time.
That's your problem.
Yeah, I know. But then if I come earlier, you know, I can finagle. Mondays are good for me because it's my early day. I can do whatever I want.
Okay, Monday, what are we looking then? Am I correct on Monday, August the fifteenth, is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, are we going to run the regular schedule?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, sounds good to me.
I'm not even going to be there.
Yeah, five is great.
Five o'clock?
You should just do a simple motion for that, then Mark can set the calendar and Holly can set.
Yeah, okay.
I will make a motion to change the August city council meeting to Monday the fifteenth at five PM.
I'll second it.
Okay, most have been made, then in second to reschedule the August council meeting due to primary election to Monday, August the fifteenth, five PM. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 it's passed, okay. Got to get that down myself. Okay, next one on the list is item E, Depot Park liquor request. Tom Ralstead, July the twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. Need a motion on that?
Yeah, before we act on that, I'm just wondering, the, these have started coming up more and more frequently. Mark, I'm wondering, is there a way we could, because we're going to approve them, is there a way we can hand that off to you to, you know, like, what if somebody comes in? You know, like, what if somebody comes in thinking, okay, it's two weeks before our family reunion, I'll go to city hall, but it's the day after we met.
Yeah.
I, is there, is there a procedure that we would need to change to authorize to leave that up to administration to sign off on that?
That makes sense.
I mean, the ordinance says approval with approval by the city council.
Let's change the ordinance. Cause I mean, really, because this, this is going to come up more frequently.
I thought the same thing.
People want to have gatherings. They want to have wine and, and beer. Um, and, and we're going to approve all of them. So.
Yeah, and I think if it's up to you, like if you kind of feel like, oh, it's a family gathering, you know, it's not like a raging keg or.
Administrator approval of liquor licenses.
Yeah, I know, because I can see the chief leaning there, you know, over there too. Yeah, typically it doesn't exist.
Really?
It's considered a liquor license that we're approving to authorize some.
Liquor consumption.
Liquor consumption. Let me think about it. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Um, let's see if we can do something around it. I mean.
But we had two this summer already. Oh, this is the second one. Right. Yeah, this is the second one.
Maybe they're not at the.
Yeah, it doesn't come up a lot.
Perspective. I mean, you're fine.
Oh, may, maybe not.
Or is there a way you can even email us all and just be like, you know, can we get an email? Can we do it an email like, hey, or is that not public?
No, it's.
Yeah, that'd be a open meeting violation.
Yeah, that'd be a violation. Okay.
All right, we won't fix it tonight, but something to think about.
I, I, I'll, I'll talk about it. We'll talk about it.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
In the meantime, I will move, we approve the Ralstead Depot Park liquor request.
Okay, motion been made second for Depot Park liquor request for Tom Ralstead, July the twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye is passed. Okay, item F, which I'm glad to see. Installation of fiber internet cable from city hall to police department. Chief, show room. Would you like to speak up please?
Sure. Um, so do a little bit more research today as well. Back a while ago, we looked into this. Coming from the LAC, I always have ETA access at my. So we talked about possibly getting a direct line and talk to DC like, yeah, let's get a direct line. Little bit more to that. So I started looking into it more and, um. The, just recently, so today I talked, talked to our IT people here that work for the city, um, or contractor for the city. And then I called the county IT, I called a few agencies to see where we're at, basically their own same, other agencies are in the same situation we are, that. They just, they just use their laptops. They're using a small laptop. Because they have to carry a server that would be as a, we don't have a server that the county and the DC. So it'd be, it'd be increase the cost as well. So pretty much everything that we need to do is the cost of money besides just the line itself. Um. So then I went back to what's. And basically. I think that's the direction where we will go probably. That part of here was initially that we got a third computer to help with some of the files, but before we were just sharing on computer. So if I started a guy and shipped up the new, new or two o'clock, then I didn't have any access for the rest of the. So we've since corrected that. I think we'll be fine there. The other part of this is Linda's job. They're trying to be more efficient. Cause she has to leave the office. She has her nice big setup at her desk right now. It's going to be nice to have her say the officer, send them up to city hall to. It sounds like.
But the line that you're looking at is for the docking station?
No, so it's a, um. Okay, that's more, that's more my ETA access. I think we found a solution that we, I'm no longer even moving to DC.
Okay.
So now we're just going to look at, um. Linda's, because she's got to work, she does some city duties as well. And so. Bring the office. I don't. Don't like when she leaves the office and gets shut down the offices.
So this would connect that building to this building?
It would just be a cat six. It's just a data line that would be tied into our. Into our internet basically and would just run right down there. Um, we talked about this, you know, this came up a while ago and I know the mayor, we've talked to him about it. The chief have, has talked to him and Wayne has. What, I guess what I would like to do is try to get a couple of estimates, you know, because I know Wayne had talked to one guy, one excavator. And it was, I believe it was an excavator and it was like eleven or twelve thousand dollars. So I would, you know, we'd like to get some. Well, you know, try to get some other, someone else to look at it and see, you know, could we get it done for a last? But I do understand the importance of it. Because if we get a data line run from here, it'll run right into our net, right into our network. So then they can be networked or Linda can be networked into our. Network and our data server, and then she could run Banyan payroll, Banyan financial right from her computer. And she wouldn't have to worry about coming down here or trying to, it hasn't worked on wifi very well. Um, so I, there, there, there would definitely be a benefit for it, but I'd like to get some clarity in the cost and.
Could we apply the COVID funds towards this?
Yeah. We could. Yes.
Council. This has been brought up before, like Mark says, it's been brought up and it kind of. Got put on the back burner. But it came up again, and I will say this here, I know that, uh, the chief has really. Fill me in on the benefit.
Wow, I just stunned him. He got away. Sorry.
You stunned us all.
Full some Mike Engle. That's what he used.
What the benefits are for the police department themselves, even that getting modernized. I think he told me, he says. Even other agencies have said, you guys don't have that hard line in, you know, to, to get up with them. Uh, Holly has mentioned, you know, it will help her, it will help Kathy, it will help Mark. It will help the public works, everybody involved into it. I really honestly want to see this thing move tonight that we get direction to get it done. It's okay to do bids, but I definitely say we need to get it done.
I would say especially if we have funds, like, yeah, the COVID funds. How many, how much funds do we have to put? Toward, how much do we have to put towards?
We approved of it enough before.
Two hundred thousand, there was two hundred thousand in COVID money originally over two, two years.
Okay.
I'd have to look back to see how much we spent out of that, but I mean, I'm sure.
You're sure you got like nine.
Thousand in there.
Ten or twelve.
I would assume so.
I mean, if there's money, there's, I mean, I, then I don't, I mean, if this was just like coming out of the, I would be like, ooh, that's all. But, but if there's money there, you know.
I think we should still get bids though, you know, let's see what's, yeah, see what we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Along with that, but this will in the long run save labor wise, just time wise factor is important.
Think it's important to use the, the phrasing would be quotes here, wouldn't it, Mr.?
Yes, that is correct.
So I'll, I'll move that, um, that we direct, uh, the city administrator to seek quotes. For moving forward with this project and bring those quotes back to the city council.
I will second that.
Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do it. There's a motion been made and second to. Get quotes. For the installation of the fiber internet cable from city hall to police department. Now, was that set when we say quotes? Are we gonna, are we going to continue on with this thing or are we just going to get quotes and let it set?
Well, his motion said to bring the course back to the council. That's what the motion says.
If the quote is a hundred thousand dollars and that's cheapest one, then we sit. You know, but if the court is reasonable, then we move forward.
Well, it looks forward here. We've had between nine and twelve thousand.
Oh, so that's what that is like.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's their, their estimates.
Okay, a motion been made second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Try to get it ASAP.
Thank you, chief. Police department fingerprint charge.
So, um, what we did, so I was talking to the county, um, of fingerprint here at the county. And, uh, they asked me how much we charge. Expenses and stuff like that, my time doing it. So, um. So she actually has some people that come from Kenny because they don't realize it's a duty here. So, so I was talking to Mark about who's our most frequent people coming to get fingerprints, it's teachers.
Yeah, the healthcare field. And education field, that, yeah, I would say those are probably your two biggest ones.
I think it's pretty reasonable around that frame. And it's other agencies.
Is this something that then Linda take, like you go in there and Linda can do this or do you? Law enforcement. Okay.
Have you asked around like what others are charging around us? Is that roughly?
Um, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because if you're like a new teacher, you're poor. You know, really, yes. I think like twenty thirty is fair, right? Like twenty, twenty-five, yeah, twenty-five, yeah.
What have you been charging?
Nothing, zero dollars. Yeah. I'm supposed to.
We have to make a motion and should we decide on the price?
I mean, it's twenty, it's twenty five, I want to, what do you guys think about twenty-five?
I make a motion to approve the police department fingerprint charge of twenty-five dollars.
I will second. Are you second? Sorry.
Okay, motion been made and second, any other discussion? What's it say on it? Police department fingerprint charge rated at twenty-five dollars, is that correct? Okay, are those in favor of it? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye is passed. Together, that is it for new business. When going to other business, schedule of upcoming meetings, KMU meeting will be Tuesday, July the nineteenth, two PM. Make that one.
Yeah, I had it on my calendar for this week. I text Mark, so, uh, yes, I will be there.
Okay. EDA meeting will be Tuesday, July the twenty-sixth at eight AM and that'll be at city hall. Oops, see quite a few there. City council meeting will be changed. To August the fifteenth at five PM. Okay? Council and staff general comments. We'll start with Mark. Do you have something?
I know, mayor, I do not.
Okay, how about you, um, city engineer Derek?
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you.
Tony Riggs?
Nor do I, no.
I'm going to pass on it also. How about you?
I don't think so, not today.
Holly?
Nothing.
Dan?
Yeah, just one thing. Uh, I know that the filing period is coming up here pretty soon for city council. Uh, I am retiring off the board when my term ends in December. So, uh, please talk to people who might be interested. Uh, in doing that and it has nothing to do with, you know, I love the organization. I've loved working with you people. I love the, the staff. And professionalism and dedication. Uh, but. I was doing the math. This is between township, county and city. This is twenty-two years. That's twenty-two years of meetings. I'm needing out. I need a break from it. And so I am, I am exiting off in December. I've just, it, it's just time. So. Um, so if you know people that are interested, please encourage them to, to file and run. So. That's all I got.
Jim, how about you?
I don't have anything either.
Chief. Kathy. And I know a lady back there, she's quiet, so. Hey, well, then we can, uh, do adjournment. Uh, anybody in favor of adjournment?
So moved.
I'll make the motion second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye is passed, we're done.
It is a long. Six on the township, twelve on the county and then four here. So it just, yeah, it.